We're not muted.
They're muted.
Okay. What happened to this chair? I feel like I'm lopsided. Am I sitting crooked? This chair feels like it's been tilted. Excuse me? Doesn't matter. I feel like I'm sitting there sideways. Call this meeting order. This meeting has been properly advertised and posted in accordance with Public Law 75, Chapter 231. Please stand for the flag salute. Couple of our residents passed away this month, one I knew on a very personal level, committed state truth and hold the damn. One is one of the sweetest people I've ever known and it still matters. What a darling woman. Also like to keep in our prayers, our country, our what we've been going through and I'm hoping that this or deal with this COVID-19 will be over soon enough. Can I roll call please?
Hmm?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Marvin Azim.
This time I make a motion to open a meeting to the public. Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor? Aye. Any votes? Do you have anybody from the public?
Yes.
Yeah, a few questions about the agenda. One is the dog barking ordinance. The other is the dog shelter versus kennel. The other is the closed session that's on the agenda for real estate and personnel as far specifically what that would be about. Oh, whoops. Did I unmute? Am I? Oh, okay. Did I unmute? Do you hear me? Do I need to repeat all that? You call it all that? Okay. And the yeah, the other was the Second Amendment resolution because that had been adopted by the county a number of weeks ago. Unless there's some dramatically different language there. So if you got those questions about the dog barking and the dog shelter and the closed session, along with the Second Amendment, I think that was that was it. At least as far as agenda items. Are there any answers?
Um, what was the question?
Until you started. Sorry, Mr. Fudd.
I'm sorry, Randy. I did not catch, other than you were talking, I didn't catch anything you said.
We didn't hear your question, so you are cutting in and out.
Okay, I'll try again. I'll do this one at a time. First question was about the dog barking ordinance. Did you hear that?
We're gonna have a discussion. Not near yet, so you'll be here. We'll be able to discuss it. What's the other question?
Well, about dog shelter versus kennel.
Okay. We haven't gotten to that level yet either, so we'll get a legal opinion from Randy once we can do major conversation. What's the other question?
Well, I guess with those two things, one point I'm asking counsel and solicitor to keep in mind is that in part because of this unique situation that we have, as far as public input and comment and being able to see what's going on, the recommendation is made to try to keep things as routine as possible rather than trying to adopt new things unless there's some major emergency. So I'm asking that that be thought of. The other part was the closed session as far as personnel and real estate, as far as what those exact specific topics are.
We have a discussion. We're gonna talk about with the real estate matter and we have a personnel matter that we don't have to discuss.
So there won't be a personnel matter in the closed session?
There will be.
There will be. What is the who is the employee that's being discussed?
Randy? That is not subject to disclosure until it's a matter that can become a problem of doubt, but at this point that cannot be disclosed.
Well, how about the real estate part? I disagree with your interpretation. I understand what you're saying, but how about the real estate part? I mean, is are we talking about a purchase or are we talking about something else?
Once again, he knows better. We can't discuss real estate matter with the public.
I didn't ask you to discuss the specifics of the offer, but as far as if you're looking to buy a price of property, looking to sell a piece of property, looking to do something with a city-owned piece of property, at least that much is supposed to be disclosed.
I think it's fair to say it's not a purchase of each of the properties. That is not a purchase of the structure.
Okay, I'm gonna ask that if there is a tenant that is involved that we that the tenant would be informed of what the discussion is, particularly before some decisions get made that may have to be undone. Okay, and then the other part was the Second Amendment piece because that had already been done at the county.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Do you have anyone else in the public? Do you know who's all about them? Mr. Guy Richards?
Yes, I'm from the public.
Yes, go ahead.
Is this open? Is this open for public discussion now?
Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? Your audio is cutting in and out.
You can ask any question pretending to what we have on the agenda.
Okay, so I'll just wait until the public portion of this so that I can raise my hand to speak.
That's correct. That's what you choose. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Do you have a variety of people that are logged in? We don't have anyone else then that's got their hand raised? Call in favor? Aye. Moving on down to the engineers' report. Michael, I assume that you're all with us? Mike, can you hear us?
Hello? Yes, I hear you now.
Hi, Mike. We're moving over to the engineers' report, so I guess you're gonna give your
Sure. Good evening. Are you there? The um, all the improvements have been installed at City Hall. I walked the site today. They have all the lighting installed and the topsoil and the seating is coming in very nice. I did get a chance to take a look at all the additional cracked areas on the walking path. I forwarded to the contractor and he gave me a price. I'm gonna just confirm that there was outsides that spoke with our design plans with the Atlantic County Improvement Authority that we can make these changes. Our improvements, I don't see why not, but I just wanna confirm before we spend this money to make those repairs. It's like it was it was I believe there was eight cracks and he quoted a price of $750 to make those changes.
We're gonna use a torch with the stick, get it molded in and then walk away. Couple hours of time?
They have a they have an epoxy. They're gonna blow out all the holes, get rid of the weeds and the debris, and it's a material that they melt inside the cracks to clear the you know, adhere the joints together. They're small enough that they don't need to be saw cut, and if you had to saw cut them, you're then creating two joints and two points of failure. So the cracks of separation, I think the largest one is maybe an inch, inch and a half. This is the best method to, you know, get these joints and cracks repaired.
I agree. I'm just gonna talk out loud and I think it's a little high, honestly. I know it's about the money because I built it myself. It's actually very high, extremely high, but council will make the decision what they wanna do. If this is coming from our from our grant from the county, correct?
Yes, it's all grant funding. CDBG grant funding.
Need to get it done. It's a issue that could come back to us as a problem if somebody walks on it and trips.
Heat repairs?
Heat cracks.
You got somebody you can come look at tomorrow or the next day?
No.
Marvin Azim.
Uh, yes, for that price. Uh, what else you have, Mike?
Okay, I did receive word from the DOT. Are you there? Kind of breaking up a little bit. I received word from the DOT that the they approved the guide rail on 12th and Beach, so I'm gonna coordinate that with the contractor and see what his schedule is looking like. But the DOT reviewed and had no objections to the additional work, and we'll move forward with that. Fifth Avenue, we're just finishing up the design, and once we have that finalized, I'm gonna set a meeting up with the Pine Land, whether it needs to be a Skype video or something, Zoom. I don't know if they're doing anything in person, but that's something we'll certainly review and get that signed off before we send that up to DOT. And then lastly, at last month's meeting, there was a discussion on the roadway to apply for the 2021 DOT grant funding. I just leave that up to council for discussion and, you know, advise us on which roadway to apply for funding considerations.
Well, my thoughts would be the same as last month. I personally, I don't even know if they're gonna administer a DOT grant following next year. They get the money to do it, and State Trinity right now is operating on they're just about 65% off the projected revenue base, and I'm not even sure what the DOT gas tax money that they're off by, but certainly people haven't been buying gas. As we know, the price of gas came down. Why? Because nobody's buying. And knowing how Trenton operates, I wouldn't be surprised if they decide to get money out of DOT trust account and use it for general purposes, so.
I make a motion. We submit a DOT grant to repay Maple Avenue.
Call in for this.
Olsen?
Yes.
Mike?
Okay, great. We'll make that we'll make that application for Maple Avenue. Yeah, you're breaking up a little bit.
Yes, we're gonna do Maple Avenue. We'll send you.
Okay.
We'll send him a copy of the resolution.
Okay, great.
You guys have Mike?
That's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, have a good evening. We'll process the application.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. It was a second?
All right. Have a good night.
Aye. Any votes? Moving down, we have the bill list. What's your question?
Question is on the 247, you're saying? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Someone I know from last meeting was appearing this tonight, and I would like to reach out to them via the maybe I think I heard they emailed to me that I'll follow up on that and work back to you. I make a suggestion, hold it.
So the next meeting or two, we'll get one of our information as the votes bow. We'll revise the motion. I'll revise my motion and make sure that's all.
Matt Bur? Yes.
Could you please email both of those bills to me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Randy, you're not on the list here tonight. What happened? Did you let it go?
I mean, what happened? I mean, obviously, it's challenging for us, for everybody, because everybody's working remotely, rebuilding, going remotely, so I have no idea of the situation. I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna hold down here for another month or so.
I gotta text it effectively since it's publicly understandable saying, is there anything we can move on to?
Um, that's all we have. Let's figure it out. Far away from Wi-Fi is the issue. I can move, Matt, if you wanna get closer to the.
I didn't want you too swat. You have to go to that chair.
That's on the table. While we're shuffling papers here in seats and playing musical chairs, what's council's feeling? We know we pay Randy on a monthly basis. We get approval to make his payment when we get his billing. We'll just simply send it out. Can we text to where I got it?
About the bill.
Just on a very proxy, the propane bill for the historical building, $344, don't get $344. You got a bill with them the last one. That building is probably not even being used. I would think that's not being used.
Maybe, I mean, but in this context, I would think the question is, do we believe that they delivered $344, don't pay anything. If we're not happy with how we use it, that's a we got kind of left.
Check words before that, which brings us to a new. Call in for please.
Olsen?
Yeah.
Olsen?
Yeah.
One moment? Yeah.
I did ask this place on the agenda because it's kind of unfinished, just the stuff that back from old progress that we revisit this, and we never did revisit it, so it's council's pleasure about.
I heard something in there.
Form of constitution of the Republican Party.
How much? They revised it. I'm sorry. They revised their resolution?
They substantially revised their ultimate resolution compared to what was originally presented by the organization. And when we discuss this, we're leaning towards doing nothing. You may have, I don't know, but I thought that's the pleasure of council.
We formally did vote to approve or not to approve. I think we tabled it that night because we were stuck on what we really wanted to vote.
The only thing that I would say is that I gotta agree with the governor's office with his red flag law. I actually do believe that if somebody's got some mental issues, I think that they should have a right to possess a firearm. And that's not in here. I'd like to add that there's a minimum of four hits of the laws on one of the law.
You hear the language?
I'll pretend, just whatever the governor's office has imposed about the red flag law, that you know, you have mental issues, that you cannot possess a firearm.
You know, table it. Next meeting, you bring us the language. You won't table it until the next meeting, and we can bring us the language. I think we're on the language.
I can do that.
I know the red flag law and calling that not just.
It's also people that have convictions. It's also people with a lot of stuff. There's a lot of stuff, and that's all. Man, I support the red flag law, but that was one of the things that I did pick up on.
Do you support aspects of the red flag law? Do you support the red flag law in society? Then you don't support the Second Amendment.
I do support.
Is that what you're? I understand. They they adopted a resolution with the nonstop.
Not just today, have it to run for.
And I'd be happy to get that circulated. I totally circulated it before, but I'm not sure.
Not revised on Randy now.
I can get the county's resolution. That's the pleasure of.
I make a motion to be able to resolve until after he gets us the revised county edition.
I'm making a motion.
We'll review that. We'll review that and that'll make a decision in July. Call in favor? Aye. Any votes?
Excuse me, one moment. I realized there's an error on the agenda. Last month, we presented Resolution 532020 authorizing the tax collector to send out estimated third quarter tax bills for, but we held it because he was not ready. He did not have the estimated rate. He is ready. I put it in your packet. I did not listen. So we do need to move Resolution 532020 authorizing estimated tax bills for the third quarter.
Make a motion. We accept the resolution. 532020?
532020.
Call in favor? Aye. Aye. Any votes? Actually, we have Resolution 602020. I did in fact have a conversation with the senator's office. I know that they're gonna do whatever they possibly can to get people to. people to, uh, try to find their way back into Atlantic City, they, uh, mentioned this idea, they said it was a sound idea, I had mentioned that I was going to propose something with the council table, they said do that, and if so, you know, when it's done there, then send it over our way. So, I would like to make a motion to support Resolution 602020. For a second?
I'll second the vote, we're in for discussion.